Okay. We are back from executive session and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
So happy it's warm in this room. It's not warm across the hall.
It's like real.
Well, if, you know, I won't be happy at 8:09.
8:09.
8:09. All right. Okay. What?
You're not hot. You're like warm, you're comfortable.
I'm very comfortable, it's really cold across the hall.
Do you need another afghan?
That's why I wore the blanket tonight. I'm good.
Aye.
Okay Matt. Let's approve the minutes from October 10th. Has everybody had a chance to read?
Yes.
Any comments? Can I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of October 10th.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye. Uh, report to the school committee, Dr. Antonechi. Public comment?
So I, um...
Oh, sorry. Public comment.
Sorry about that.
That was my... I always assume there's no... Do we have anybody for public comment? No. Okay. Dr. Antonechi.
So I actually had some... My report's gonna be very brief tonight, but I have some really sad news to report and I, I'm sorry for having to deliver this news in public, but I think it's important and I just want to report that the Ducksbury Public Schools employee, Paul Carroll, who was our part-time crossing guard, passed away last night. He had just started the year off in September and was already a, you know, excellent Ducksbury Public School employee. He was a retiree from, longtime employee of Gillette and we just know from conversation that he was really enjoying his time here in Ducksbury. But I also want to mention Paul's wife Patricia also works for us. She's a before and after dark coordinator, she's been here for a few years, so I just wanted to let the public know and, and you all. And final arrangements for services aren't known at this time, but we'll try to communicate, we'll communicate those out when we get them and I just thought it might be nice to have a, just a brief moment of silence for him.
Okay.
Thanks. Thank you. And my only other thing tonight is I just, another reminder to folks watching or listening that our school committee meeting is next Thursday, November 1st, after Halloween, Thursday, November 1st, but, but it's important because I'll be presenting the FY '20 budget at that meeting, so I want to make sure that's communicated and advertised. We'll be sending out a reminder to, to the listserv and the newspaper this week as well. All right? That's it for me.
All right. Dr. Ferman?
Good evening. I just wanted to give a brief update about the strategic planning process that we are in the middle of right now. So as you read in your folder, Mr. Farmer, who is leading the committee, recently provided an update to everyone. We had an orientation meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee on Wednesday, September 26th, which has kind of explained the process and the plan for all the participants. During that time, we made subgroups, so subcommittees that will be working together. And the first subcommittee that got right to work was the survey committee, so we have a group of people that have been meaning to create a survey that will go out to the teaching staff and to any community members that we can get to fill out the survey. So we'll be hopefully sharing that with the greater community through social media, the Ducksbury Clipper and any other means that we can. The survey will be going out to parents and staff members, hopefully on Friday. We have two community parent forums that are scheduled. One is on November 6th and the other on November 28th at the middle school, high school library. So we hope to have a lot of people attend those meetings to be able to share their thoughts and for the future of the Ducksbury Public Schools. Also, the next full Strategic Planning Committee meeting will be on December 3rd. We'll, we'll be spending the whole day kind of sorting through the data that we collect on the surveys and through the open forums at that time and starting to craft the plan. And we have a new area on the school website where the, where there is strategic planning information available and if you go to the district website under Administration and Superintendent's Office, you can find the strategic planning information. Thank you.
Any questions? It's fun to be on, I'm on the core values committee and Sarah McGuire is on it as well and, you know, you talk for, and Jim, forever, because there's just so much that we want to encompass. And then you have to just...
Six words.
Simmer it down to, yeah, what do we represent, so. But we're, it'll be awesome. Dave?
Yes. I just have a quick update. We have sent the end of the year report to the DESI and we also sent it to the town accountant and as soon as she signs off on it, I'll be two more signatures, which will be one from yourself and one from the superintendent. Other than that, we're, we're pretty good at this point.
All right. We're hopping. No student reps tonight. Maybe they're getting ready for the Red Sox. I know the girls volleyball played today. Any updates? Anybody know?
It was, uh, it was tied with earlier in the third game when he came over.
And it was Notre Dame, it was one of the big rivals, so, okay. And I know the Alden kids did the Dragon Dash, I want to say they raised $25,000, right? It's incredible for the PTA. And the book fair is ongoing now and conferences and... It is busy, but it's all good. Okay. The only thing I was gonna mention is tomorrow night, the Parent Connection is sponsoring the social media presentation. There's been a lot of outreach for it and we've talked a lot about this generation, I guess it's iGen, and this is the generation of kids that were born with a phone in their hands or were handed a telephone, cellphone, sorry, it's not a telephone. You can tell my age. And, and they are sort of the least social, the way we would define social, face-to-face. They're always on their devices and they feel like they can have more outreach and reach people, but they are the group that shows the highest amounts of anxiety and depression, so. And NPR had some specialists on and they were saying it's the biggest switch in generations because the millennials are overconfident and they just, you know, went blazing and have changed the workplace and they want it and they want it now and they're gonna get it and they can do it and then the iGen are very low in self-confidence. And so tomorrow night, I think it's just gonna talk about trying to get to that social piece and get kids away from their phones. And I have a fifteen-and-a-half-year-old daughter, so it's tough. That's their whole world. So whoever can go to that tomorrow night. I can't because I'm picking up from ballroom dancing, which is very exciting.
I had a question about, we got this legal alert from MASC around changes to the Model Memorandum of Understanding between police departments and the town. And I know that school security and working with the police department is part of your plan for the year, so I was wondering whether there would be an opportunity for us to review?
Yeah, it's on our radar, haven't taken any action yet.
Great, okay. Okay. Good.
Thanks for the reminder though.
That's great.
And then my last agenda item for me was we have not done our school committee goals for this year. When you go to the website, the goals listed are the 2016-17 goals. And then if you go into the school committee minutes for last year, our October 4th meeting lists our goals from 2017-18, but we need to have goals for 2018-19 because they talk about entry plan, it was hiring superintendent entry plan. So if people can get, review that and get ideas to me, maybe by November 1st, we can vote on something. I'll see if I can put something together and we can vote on it November 14th.
Great.
All right. That's all I have. So discussion items, 2018-19 school improvement plans.
So we, we have the four building principals who are gonna come up together?
Yep.
And you all, hopefully had an opportunity to look at their school improvement plans. They're in your shared folder and we've asked them just to come up and maybe highlight one or two things that they deem worthy of highlighting and then if there's any questions, obviously they'd be glad to answer them, but if that's a good format for you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you gonna use it?
We're not gonna use it.
Oh, you're not?
Yeah.
Not to highlight. This is exciting, everybody wants.
We love it. We're a team.
All right.
Sarah, is this, is this your first official school committee meeting as principal? No, as principal? Congratulations, Sarah McGuire.
Okay, so I'll start. So for Chandler, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna sort of highlight a few areas in our school improvement plan and then we're just open to questions since you've read them already, so we're not gonna go through the whole thing. So for Chandler, I'm just gonna highlight the social-emotional learning goal that we have written. So as you know, this is a goal of the district and so the way we're gonna focus on it at Chandler is just to continue to build our resources with our green initiative, which I know we talked about last year. I have to tell you, Mrs. McNeil, our assistant principal, has done an amazing job creating a web resource, a staff website to include lessons and book lists and all sorts of different resources and videos for teachers to use for kids in the classroom, along with the green team in our school, that's sort of our social-emotional committee at Chandler. It has all sorts of resources, like I said, from Castle, the different social competencies and all the lessons and books in there are tied to those concepts, so it's a, it's a really great resource for staff and we're starting to sort of highlight an area in that website every week for staff so that they can just keep diving into all the different things that are in there. We are also continuing our calm classroom initiative this year, expanding that a little bit. We're doing it Monday, Wednesday and Friday in the morning announcements. We're doing it at lunch whenever we have a chance, in PE classes and in classrooms. So the kids really do respond to that as, I think we talked about it in the spring, but we're just expanding that because we have seen it make a difference for the kids' day. We're also doing a school-wide focus in our less structured areas of the day, such as lunch and recess, just sort of, those tend to be the areas of the day where, you know, kids are not supervised quite as closely with their social interactions and so we want to give them the tools to be able to, you know, interact appropriately with each other during those times. So I'm doing some lessons in the cafeteria. I did one in second grade so far using the book, What If Everyone Did That, and just sort of read a story and talked about, you know, what if everybody stood up at the same time and walked around the cafeteria? What if everybody, you know, threw food in the cafeteria? What if everybody was respectful in the cafeteria? And we've sort of talked through that. I gave school-wide homework to all the second graders and it was a great response and, you know, I was able to use those student responses and sort of, you know, model for the other kids what that looks like and talk about it. So we're gonna continue doing things like that throughout the school year to just sort of support the kids in those less structured areas of the day. Any questions about that?
How, how is the student population? Are they responsive? Is it...
They're fantastic, yes. They absolutely, you know, the second grade, it happens every year with second graders in the cafeteria, they, they know the routine, they know what they're supposed to do and therefore they can be a little bit more rambunctious in the cafeteria. So, you know, it's just, it's just that bringing back to like, what are the expectations and what does expected behavior look like and what does that do for all of us as a community? And I think they, they really responded well to that and it's been okay ever since and not saying that it's gonna be perfect for the rest of the year, but it definitely helped.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I also just wanted to quickly highlight my curriculum and assessment goal this year. We have a new literacy program in place, curriculum materials, and we're gonna be implementing, we are implementing Reader's Workshop along with the DRA, which is the developmental reading assessment. We've done one round of that for all kids K through 2 at this point and we're gonna be doing a winter and a spring as well, so we can, that's, that information gives us more comprehension information for kids reading so that we can target our instruction better with our Reader's Workshop materials.
Yeah, and I had a question, it's gonna be maybe the same for each of the different principals, but the question I have is, social-emotional learning is well-understood in your community amongst educators, amongst faculty, but I think it's not well-understood amongst parents and amongst the broader community. So my first question is, you know, the responsibilities of teachers are expanding continuously. Do you get some, how much support do you have amongst the faculty for an emphasis and as a priority on social-emotional learning when you're trying to also make sure kids can read and, you know, progress in all the other core, what would be traditionally considered core disciplines? So first is how's the faculty support and kind of enthusiasm? And second is what interactions, if any, are you starting to have with parents? Their understanding of the need, why it's a priority for the district and for your, you know, for your faculty and for the students? So I'm interested in your perspectives, even, we're really trying to emphasize this and I think it's not something that's really widely understood, so.
Right.
Back to your response and initial reaction from parents when you talk about social-emotional learning.
So I think, you know, at Chandler, we are saying all the time, we believe that kids can't learn if they're not safe and happy. So I think, you know, everyone in our community at Chandler believes that and understands that, so there's no pushback at all from staff. In fact, many staff members have written into their own goals, social-emotional aspects of what they are gonna be doing in their classrooms and speaking about, so that, that does translate into like what they're talking to parents about. Our guidance counselor, our school adjustment counselor and our school psychologists, for example, have written a social-emotional goal around parent communication. So one of the things that they're doing is sending out articles every once in a while through my Monday update, including articles that they think are relevant to our age group. And today at conferences, they set up sort of a parent resources table in the lobby to, you know, have parents just stop by, get some of the things that will help their students with coping skills and, you know, the things that parents are reporting that they're seeing at home. So I think the staff speaking for Chandler is really invested in this.
Right.
Absolutely. Do you want us to all answer that question?
Well, no, just maybe consider that, yeah, and then you can comment on, you know, staff support and initial impression from parents. Because Danielle, what you said to the faculty at convocation, where you said that number one impact we can have in helping our students be successful is to make a connection with them, that's not something that's well-understood, right? I think if you asked your average parent, they would say, whatever, you know, I mean, it wouldn't be that. I, I think they would think of something else. So I think there's a great opportunity to educate us as parents, but also the community of why this is so impactful and beneficial for our students and necessary frankly. It's not, it's not like, oh, this is a nice thing to do. So anyhow, just...
So I am gonna speak on social-emotional, but to answer your questions right up front, it's interesting, the faculty says, oh, now they've put a name to what I've done all my life, for the last 30 years, make connection with kids and make them feel safe. And so for the staff and the faculty, it's just, speaking it all, then second nature to them to make sure that they greet their kids in the morning, to make sure that kindness is in the forefront as they're talking to other kids, how important that is and to make sure that this, the child is safe. If they're not safe and comfortable and feel cared for, I don't care what you do, what type of curriculum and how much money you spend, you're not going to reach the child. And so it's a name and I think it's because kids are much more anxious these days and so I think the focus is there, but teachers certainly understand it. Parents, it's same, Erin talked about, we're, we're building a website for parents. Our adjustment counselor and our assistant principal is working on that, so parents can read and if you go in currently to the adjustment counselor's website and she often talks to families when she follows up on the groups that she works with about articles of coping mechanisms. I just saw an email that she put out today about, you know, she's starting a group, a support group for kids whose parents have been recently divorced because she's seen the, you know, they're anxious when they come to school because dad brings them late or mom brings them late and they don't know how to deal with that. And so she recognizes that and just sent an email today to teachers to please, you know, if you see that in your classrooms, it's important for me to know that because I'm putting a group together. And contacting the parents to know, to let them know that that's available because they're looking for supports like that from us. So as things like that develop, parents are informed. That's just one example, but. So our goal, you know, is to provide the students with a safe, welcoming and conducive to learning environment and the way that we'll show that is a decrease of referrals to the adjustment counselor. She tracks that very closely as to why they're being, you know, you refer to her as well as the behavior incidents that we track for all of our students constantly. So we'll be doing that and all the action steps, providing SEL training and on January 18th at one of our professional development days. At every monthly staff meeting, on teacher share, what they are doing in their classrooms and it's amazing to listen to all the different things and they're writing it down. I purchased books for all of our teams on social-emotional learning in the classroom. I took some professional development money and teachers are using that. My Monday memo, my Monday focus is, has a book called 20 Ways to Implement SEL in Your Classroom. So I'm reading it with the staff, you know, on things that they can do and what does that look like in your classroom? It's a real practical book. So there's many more action steps on there, but that is a, that is a goal. I know it's a goal of the district and it's really important and it's just, like I said, teachers do it all the time, we're just giving them some additional tools to help with the new look of kids. And the second goal I want to highlight of the four is our security goal. I, we've done, we have the badges. All of our doors are locked now, so they access by badge, magnets on the doors and we're looking at additional ways and I don't know if Jim's gonna speak to it, but Friday, the high school had a great PD, so we're gonna be working with the police department for what we're going to do at the elementary level. And because it's ever-changing and we're talking about not just sheltering in place, we need to work with the police department and I've spoken with Nick this week to see what does that look like at the elementary level? And it's really important and, and because we're attached to the high school, it's even more important for me, so I just want to make sure that we're on top of that. And teachers are asking, you know, what does, what scenario can I go to, you know, the backfield into the library and things that we haven't talked about before that we're now talking about and, you know, making sure that all teachers know how to press that button and, like, you guys weren't here yet, but I was just, I was trying something different on the phones before you came in on the tones for the lockdown. And it does work in different classrooms and, you know, there's a, there's a quick shortcut and I just wanted to make sure it worked. So things like that are, you know, in the forefront now and so that's what we're gonna be working on and training the staff this year.
Questions?
Great. So I'm also gonna highlight our social-emotional learning goal to answer your questions to start off. The faculty has been extremely receptive to social-emotional learning and very similar to Alden, the reaction was kind of like, okay, great, someone's making money off of this wheel now, but it's really encompassing what we valued as particularly in a middle school setting, what we think those kids need in terms of some explicit instruction on those five competencies like self-management and interactions with peers and what's appropriate. And I've found that they've reacted in ways that they value the ability to explicitly link that to their curriculum and spend the time in classes and as teams and as teacher groups to focus on how to support kids developing those skills. So it's really kind of been great to see the reaction. I've seen a number of goals of teachers be, evaluation goals be specifically geared to these SEL strategies. We started off with faculty meetings digging into these competencies and learning about the specific strategy that would reflect that competency in a class and what does that look like in a science class or a math class or a social studies class or, or anywhere else in the building? I've also been excited to see folks leveraging our structures in middle school to support this as well, so that team structure really does support that community development and kids using these skills. And a number of our teams have kind of highlighted those, those SEL competencies in team spaces with kids. One of the things that I've done is developed an advisory of students to work with throughout the year as well, so that they have a voice in kind of what they think will impact their community and what they think their peers need. And it's interesting to hear them reflect, kind of needing to take, develop some skills to manage screen time and how to appropriately interact with peers in unscheduled time or unstructured time, I should say. So that's exciting. And then the, oh, I should say, to your second question, parent reaction's been really positive as well in conversations with my school council, with my PTO and then just kind of informally with other groups of parents. I think at the middle school age, the social dynamics and the, they get a little bit more freedom to kind of operate and managing that and kind of negotiating how that gets more and more complex in their middle school experience is something that parents are looking for resources for and for teachers to be supporting. So it's been really positive in my experience so far. And then the second goal I wanted to highlight was our, our security and safety updates. To reiterate what Karen already said, on Friday, our professional development in the morning was created in collaboration with the Ducksbury Police Department and it was really well-received. I think it was, we really spent a lot of time to put together what we thought was a really effective kind of laying out of updates to our procedures, reasoning behind that and then just kind of practical knowledge for folks. It's not a fun topic to dig into, but the, the reception from the faculty was really positive and I especially want to thank the Ducksbury Police Department and the folks that came in on that morning and helped us with that. They were fantastic, so that was great.
Thank you for all.
Oh, I was just gonna ask Sarah, one of the issues we discussed regarding the middle school last year was class sizes. There were some classes in which there were higher numbers of students in the classroom than we would have wished. So I was wondering how that was playing out this year? There's been a small reduction or actually a slight increase in the number of students in, in the middle school, I think, as of the preliminary population figures, but are the, are class sizes any, particularly in math, have they improved at all or are we, is still that an issue and, you know, how does that link in with learning and social-emotional learning?
Sure, sure. So in our math classes, grades six, seven and eight, we do continue to have large class sizes. It's kind, there's a number of elements that factor into that, one of them being the levels of math classes and so when you kind of add in more requirements to a student's schedule, it kind of forces students into certain blocks of time. And I made a conscious decision to, if we were gonna have class sizes that had to be larger, to put those at the upper levels to allow for greater support for our students that are identified as needing that support and the smaller class sizes. But we do continue to see those larger class sizes. That being said, I think the strategies in those five competencies can be applied in, in large groups of, of students. And I think our, our teachers are, because they're embracing those strategies so well at the team level, I'm not seeing it as a barrier to success, if that makes sense, but I'd much prefer to see smaller class sizes in those, particularly in the math, yeah.
And as, the students, as I understand it, are grouped and they go to, they follow each other, their single group of students goes from math to English to, or they...
No, so they, so they move, so the same 25 kids wouldn't be in... No. So they, so they move, so the same 25 kids wouldn't be in math and then all together in the next English class or whatever. But when there's a larger math class, the other classes on team may be smaller because more kids are there, for instance. When we have a lot of kids at certain languages or music classes, we see kind of shifts in the building.
Sure.
If it were a boat on water, you might see it actually move that way. But, so, but no, they, they, they travel based on the courses that fit their schedule.
So you wouldn't necessarily find a student who was in a large math class and then a large English class and then a large science class?
Uh, I, not as a rule in their schedule.
Okay, okay, great.
Is that because of the leveling?
It has to do-
Because math is the only leveled course?
So that's leveled. We have two different music groups. If a student doesn't take music, we run a certain number of, you know, art classes and stuff. There's a lot of, certain languages only run certain, certain blocks. So it gets complicated if you go down the rabbit hole. But the more rules you put on a student's schedule, the, the more often like they could only have math that period three, for instance. And that kind of has an effect on the, the broader population as well.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Well, good evening. I think I'll start by answering Mr. Newman's question. So our faculty is, is very, very aware, they very much want to help. The same, I would echo what Karen said before, these are the things we've been doing all along, they just have a, they have a different name. One of the things that's challenging about that name is that we have to kind of, there's almost new language to SEL. And so our staff have been working on that and through that over the last couple of years. We've put in a, a number of initiatives from our stress-less weeks to different types of assemblies and mental health and yoga, all this kind of stuff that we've introduced. One of the things that Sarah, Danielle and I are working on is a survey tool that would allow us to get some better information about our students, what our student strengths and weaknesses are relative to all five of those domains, and be able to get that information out to teachers. So they have a better sense of the profile of the kids they're working with, as well as, pardon me? A little closer. I'm sorry, Charlie. Thank you very much. So we have a better profile of the needs. And then as a school, we can go after some of our largest areas of need together. And I think that's one of the things that our staff is really looking for, is the, our teachers see anywhere between 100 to, we've got, you know, some of our music teachers see 200 kids. It's really hard to get a sense of all the details for everyone. In addition to the content and speed and the pace of the college search and athletics and all, all of those other dimensions which make the high school awesome, but also make the speed of the high school really, really fast. So we actually spent some time today with, with that company trying to work out how we can get the tool, get the data, get the information out quickly for both schools, hopefully in early December. Our school council, the high school council encouraged me to pursue that and not pursue the school climate survey, which we normally would have done this year, but to get that information because it's so important for the kids and staff right now. And then pursue the climate stuff next year. So I think the parents who are really engaged are really in. And we have these conversations and guidance in different ways as we go through the college process. So I think, I think there's a lot of support, but I think, especially for parents, there's a lot of language. And we're hoping that that tool and the information we learn about our, you know, 1,700 kids will be able to start a really more informed conversation with parents. So we're looking forward to that. Two other goals, I just want to briefly highlight, our communication is, across the high school. So we generate thousands and thousands and thousands of articles of really amazing student work that no one ever sees. And our, our goal this year is to begin to share that more deliberately and more thoughtfully with the greater school community. So Mr. McGuire and I have asked each of the departments to give us the best examples of student work, which for years has been displayed along Main Street and in these beautiful cabinets that you only see if you're there and in front of it. So one of the things we want to do is get that content turned over more, get it published, get it out in, in the newsletter. We started that with the English department a couple of weeks ago, two weeks ago. Really great examples of student work and sharing it with the community and making all of those cases all around the building accessible all the time through our website. So it's a real big push for us. And then finally, assessment data. At the high school, we have not really done a big, the same type of dive that Chandler, Alden, and the middle school have done with all the different data points that we have on our students. And now that we're getting the next-gen MCAS data coming up from our, our current ninth graders, we need to begin as a school to look at that and get a sense of what that data is telling us about our students in, in advance of the graduation requirement tests in 10th grade. And then also some of our other data, the PSATs, you know, this predictive college aptitudes work, and then compare it with our actual student performance during the day. So that's something that we have not, as a, as a school, really dug into over the last couple of years. And we are excited, I'm certainly very excited about it, about looking into it. And, and also the, as Danielle mentioned, I believe, two weeks ago when we were here, when she was making her report about MCAS, the lowest-performing group in that high needs group of students. And begin to get that information out into our teachers' hands so they can have better interventions quicker, more timely, and more appropriately.
Good?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay. Next item is the one-to-one computing program, potential changes for 1920.
Can you move, Cheryl?
You guys kind of project?
Could I just, just address the principles before you guys go? You know, I'm not an educator and there's, there, everyone has been educated. And I think broadly, there's a sense that we're doing the same thing in schools that we've always done. Schools don't change very rapidly. Schools can't make course corrections and, and adjust. And I just want to say how much I appreciate the work that you're doing and how responsive I'm seeing this district and the leadership in the district to the evolving needs of our students. And it is not the same. It is not the same as three years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago. And so often, the comparison is, well, it's not that different than when I went to middle school or high school or what have you. And, and it is. Right? From my limited perspective, I just want to thank you. It's exciting. You have an opportunity to innovate, keep doing it. And it's necessary because the needs of our students are evolving, the needs of our society are evolving so dramatically. So I'm really just appreciative and also supportive of the work that you're doing. And I'm really impressed by your willingness to take on these challenges, trying to address them as best you can, improve on the fly, you know? So, well done. I'm like, I can't connect to you.
Can my buddy go and do say that?
They shut me off there.
Sure.
Over my access. of the second phase or next generation of our one-to-one computer program, which is currently in grades, it's really six, six through 12. It's a topic that we've discussed in various contexts over the last couple of years, but it's sort of, it's sort of decision time. And so we're going to talk through that and tell you, tell you, tell you what our recommendations are. So Cheryl, you want to just flip that? So this is, this is what we're going to talk about in the next few minutes. First is really why are we here? We'll go into a little bit about why one-to-one in the first place, why we think one-to-one computing is important in 21st century education. We'll talk a little bit about the needs, what needs do we have and what devices meet those needs. Talk a little about the changing landscape, really the laptop market, but it's also, I'd argue, and the shift, shift from, shift to cloud-based computing, which has changed quite a bit over the last, even five years, but certainly 10. Talk about a very important topic, cost. And then, not to give away the punchline, but we're going to talk about something called Chromebooks, which some of you might know. So I'm just going to go up top just for a moment to talk about the why are we here. As you all know, our, when the district first went one-to-one four years ago?
Yes.
The town funded a, a three-year lease for those devices, for Apple MacBook Airs. That lease actually expired last year. And if you recall, in our budget conversation, we decided that we were going to take a pause and that we weren't going to really, for my, I was new to the district, but really I didn't want to rush into a decision, given the lease had just expired. So we made a decision to forego any major purchases last year and keep our, keep our existing fleet, is that the right word?
Yes.
Of, of machines. Those machines are getting older. They're really kind of nearing the end of their useful life. And if you recall, too, in our budget discussion last year, we actually had to build in a larger equipment repair and replacement budget just to accommodate that aging inventory, which we did. And we're kind of in the middle of that, in the middle of that now. But we can't do that for much longer, really any longer. I mean, they, those, those devices are at the end of their useful life, truly impacting the classroom. So we need to make a decision for kind of the next generation. The big question is, do we stay one-to-one? I, I know I speak for the entire leadership team and probably the entire district when I say absolutely yes. I, I can't really, I can't see a high-performing school district without it. And, you know, we can, we'll talk more about that in a moment, but I just, I kind of want to say that, let me just go back one, Cheryl. Oh, and okay, we'll get to the other two. Sorry, you know, we'll talk about the fit and sustainability in a few moments. So I'm just going to give a two-second or two-minute quick update on one-to-one. This is not so much for the school committee as much maybe as for the, the community who might be watching, because we talk about it all the time, but it's not necessarily in the tip of everybody's tongue. So Cheryl, very, I love this definition. I get it from a colleague, you know, what is a one-to-one school? And I'll let you read it for a moment. I think the most powerful statement in that is the intent of one, the last sentence is the intent of one-to-one programs to empower students with anytime and anywhere learning. And we've seen evidence of that in Duxbury since the implementation of the one-to-one program. It happens every day and it's really exciting to see our kids thrive in that environment. So that's sort of like, what is a one-to-one school? And the reason it's important, why, why, why is that important? And we, again, we have evidence of this. And this is not just in Duxbury, but there's been a big shift in the, in the country, in the world, into much more personalized learning, student-centered learning. And a one-to-one environment really helps foster our, our ability to do that. I think one-to-one provides equity, right? When every student has the same access to materials and resources and content, I think we're all better for it. The idea of spontaneity, the ability to, in a moment, react into a classroom and kind of move into a lesson that is either exciting or some kind of ha-ha moment. You can't really be as spontaneous if you don't all have, all have the same tools at your disposal. We throw this term around, but to me, it's the obvious, but the idea of making kids college and career-ready. I don't have to talk to you about the importance of that and also what that looks like in, in real life. Our kids need, need to be well-versed and extremely proficient with technology. The more basic, you know, why, why do you need a device in your hand is kind of the obvious, you know, quick access to resources, improved organizational efficiency. To me, those are, I think quick access is really important. Organizational efficiency is just a nice-to-have. I think when we're talking about teaching and learning, the other stuff is much more important. And if none of that satisfies your interest in one-to-one, the state's requiring us to, to do our next-generation MCAS all online. So right now, we are obligated to have enough devices in the schools for every student. Now, that doesn't necessarily obligate us to have a one-to-one program. It just means we need to have enough devices in the building to make that happen. But that is, that is something that's really important. We also need, need our kids to be super facile and super proficient with the device because we're, we're putting them into a high accountability situation in, in a one-to-one testing environment. So that's just sort of a, a rehash of why one-to-one. Again, I can't see us going backwards. I, I really can't.
John, do we have any data on, I think the organizational piece is actually a, a big piece.
It's important, yeah.
Because, you know, I don't know, kids in sixth grade used to have the big binder and then they'd lose things and then they'd cry and then they, I mean, you can have a folder for each class and you can, everything you need is there. The teachers have tutorials on. And for me, the potential for organization and leading to better student success, you know, for someone with poor executive functioning skills. Do we have any data on that or any feedback from?
I don't know specifically. I'm sure we could get some feedback for you.
Integrate them.
I just would be interested to know.
Yeah.
How helpful that is.
I don't mean to minimize the idea of your organization, but, and, and computers aren't for everybody in that realm. He has rights. Sometimes, sometimes they're, so I just say, I, I just, I meant to say, I much more want to focus on the, the actual-
Right. But I think it definitely has a lot of merit.
Very, oh, kids, many kids thrive with that.
Right.
Much more than a paper and notebook environment. And then-
Can I ask you, just to clarify my question on the first item, increase in personalization? So what, what do you mean by that? The reason why I ask is that it seems to me that there's a lot of the buzz around the availability of technology is that it informs personalized, individualized learning. So in other words, student A learns in a certain way and student B learns in another way, then access to the technology is going to help sort of individualize instruction for the way that each of those students learn. But i- is that what you mean when you say personalization? Or is it more along the lines of it's a more personalized experience because each student has more access to content at any time?
No, I think, you know, actually, the next, next slide, you, I just switched over for a second. Talk, we talked about sort of what's happened, the shift in education sort of from more traditional instruction where the teacher's just delivering content, you know, to kind of the more contemporary teaching and learning environment where it's more inquiry-based. And, and there's a term there that I, to answer your question, Matt, it's about student agency. And student agency, that, that term, we throw it around a lot, but it really just means putting the student in the driver's seat.
Yeah.
You know, making, making, they become the person who's taking an active role in their own, in their own learning.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's what we're talking about with personalization is-
Can I just add a, a personalization too?
Go ahead, Danielle.
There are programs now that you can have the teacher delivering the same topic or content, and it would be delivered to everyone at their individual reading level. So you could take an article that, in the past, you would have all been reading the same article and it would have been above some students' heads and too easy for others. But now we can, we can make the content personalized. So there's programs that, based on how you take assessments and the work that you're doing gets it right at your just-right reading level.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing with math. If you're working at a higher-level concept and some kids are needing some remediation at a lower-level concept, the whole class can be working together at the same time, but working at their own individual levels.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that allows a lot of personalization, whether it's a whole-class assignment or whether you're working on something individually. Maybe it's a skill that on an assessment you showed that you needed some more help with, you can go back and get some help in that area, right from the program or with the teacher's support for intervention.
Right, okay. That's helpful. So giving the student more sort of active control over accessing their own, sort of, rather than taking a passive approach. And then individualizing the content to the sort of the level of content based on the student's understanding. Okay.
And there's automation associated with that?
Yeah.
In other words, like you can funnel the more challenging work to a certain subset of students and-
Exactly.
Well, that's remarkable.
Yeah. The reason why I ask is-
You could demo some of that at some point, I think.
I mean, I, I ask the question because the, the marketing along, around a lot of these tools, I think suggests something that may not necessarily be that true, in that like, and, and I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because I would hate to see parents in the community thinking like, oh, you know, my kid is visual, so I want to make sure that, you know, the, you know, the technology is respectful of his or her sort of visual, you know, and that's kind of like, not true, or at least my understanding. You know what I mean? So I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page with what personalized learning really means and how technology enables it.
All right. So I'm going to shift, I'm going to shift off to sort of why one-to-one and just talk kind of brass tacks, because this is why we're here. Cheryl?
So over the past two years, we started investigating what our next advice was because a year- because a year ago would have been the time that we were originally going to replace them. So, we've been working on this for two years. And I came in the fall in 2017 and kinda gave you a brief outline. First of all, state testing must be done online. If you're in the buildings in the mornings from April through the beginning of June, you will know that the entire tech team is out on the floors of Alden Middle School and, and now the high school, supporting teachers as they're giving online testing. So, state testing is pushing devices in all of the classrooms, grades three through 10 at least. All of our classrooms that require specialized computing needs, for instance, video production or photography, all have specialized computers in their classrooms. So when we're talking about replacing one-to-one, we're not looking at those specialized needs, those have already been done. What we did was, we collected a list of applications and software that each of the departments are using, grades six through 12, which is, this is the one-to-one that we'll be replacing. And this is the list. And so then, what we did was, we did it by department, and then we grouped it all in. And we looked at any, at the computing devices that have a keyboard. So we looked at a Windows device, we looked at a, the MacBook Air, and we looked at a Chromebook. And on the, um... Yeah, I'm gonna make it bigger, actually. So, what we did was, so on the MacBook Air, which is on the far left, you have a calendar. You also have a calendar ability in Windows, and you have Google Calendar in the Chromebook. Contacts, you have contacts, you have people, you have Google contacts, FaceTime. So, for FaceTiming other classrooms, we have FaceTime on the MacBook Air, we have Skyping in Windows, and we have Google Meet. We have browsers in everyone. And if you'll see, some things are only used by certain departments, and then others are used by many departments. And we just went through. For iMovie in MacBook Air, there's a Windows Movie Maker on PCs that most classrooms use, and there is a Wii Video on the app on the Chromebook. So, there are lots of substitutes. iTunes, iTunes Play Music. Keynote would be the presentation software on MacBook Air. PowerPoint is on Windows, and the Google Chrome has slides. And so the English department had said they use that. So, all the way through, we went through and listed all of the major software and applications and what you can do with it. And so we, we found that there were alternatives in, on each of the three devices for all of the major software applications that the departments are using, grades six through 12. So, based on that, we determined our needs can be met with a cloud-based device, such as a Chromebook, with few exceptions. We also know that we are going to have a lot of MacBook Airs coming back to us from the one-to-one grades six through 12 currently, that we can put into carts for those teachers who particularly wanna do something with iMovie. And so we fully intend to put a cart on each of the three floors in the high school, in the middle school, so that as we move over to another device potentially, they have access to be able to do some of the things that they were doing as we make that transition.
Cheryl has a question?
Sure.
Is it assumed that all students know how to use all the applications? Or do the teachers have to take the time to instruct?
So, as they move up through the grades, they're using some of them. And basically, what's happening is, as they move up, they start using the applications, and then everyone is helping everyone else in the classroom. So the teacher's providing some support, the students are providing support with each other.
And to the teacher.
And to the teacher, usually too, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, this is the changing landscape. John found this chart. It's the share of mobile device shipments to US schools over the last six years. And you will see the shift in the landscape. So, in 2012, Apple was the top device. And they have dropped rapidly. And then, the, the PCs have also dropped. And the Google Chromebooks have increased dramatically. They now account for 60% of the devices in the US schools. And at, every time you talk to districts, more and more districts have moved to Chromebooks. So, now that we have determined that a cloud-based device, all three are fairly comparable. They, they have applications, you can do what, what you would like on each one of them. We took a look at the cost per device. So, a MacBook Air with the newest OS, because I have to have the newest operating system for the MacBook to last six, seven, eight years, is $1,249 right now. I need 1,900 devices to cover grades six through 12, with some loners as well. It's $2.37 million.
Cheryl, you did, just on that point, we, we, you have heard rumblings though, that they might be releasing a slightly lower model, but not even still over $1,000 at all, yeah.
Their Tuesday is the day that they, Tuesday, October 30th, is they, they're going to be releasing new, a new MacBook. Their, the rumor is a new MacBook and potentially a new MacBook Air. And it's, they're saying, the rumor is anywhere between $1,000 and $1,200 for the two. So, that remains to be seen, but $1,000, if you look over at the Google Chromebook, I can still get four Google Chromebooks for the price of one MacBook. So, and we will have the Apple presentation on in the tech room, if anyone wants to join us, Tuesday morning. So, the PCs, Dell 13-inch is $1,074 currently. To get 1,900 of those devices, it's just over $2 million. The Google Chromebooks are at $229.35 a device. And then, you need licenses, and we're getting white glove treatment, so what it, they will set those, them up for us. Also, for the MacBooks and the PCs, the white glove service and the Apple Care coverage, which is also included in the Google Chromebook price, is not included. So actually, those prices would be higher than what you see on the screen. The all-in quote that we got is $512,997.50. That includes 10 laptop carts for grade six that are, that are geared for the Google Chromebooks because the grade six students do not take their laptops home. So, those are the prices.
And this is for outright purchase, rather than?
This is outright purchase for all of them.
And Cheryl, do you know offhand what parents, I imagine most parents insure the laptops? How much are we spending as parents on insurance?
For the MacBook, it's currently about $80 a year.
Right, so $320 per family, on top of what the district's spending.
Yeah.
And that's less than?
Yeah, I, and we talk about insurance a lot, I, they don't have a number for you tonight, but in my, in my former district, our insurance per year optional is $25.
Right.
Where it's self-insured, the, the machines don't really require much, but it's.
So, but saving to district, saving to family.
Not alone.
It's 1,900 times 320 over a four-year or more over six years, almost $500 per family for six years of laptops, so.
And this is the device, if you want, if you want to pass it down now. This is the device that I quoted out. It's military-grade.
Cool.
Yeah.
Are you gonna get to, I, I see it says white glove setup services and stuff, but are you, I, I don't wanna cut you off if you're already gonna talk about tech support and spa, cloud space, like space, and that will be allowed to the school, things like that?
Well, no, I don't think any of that's gonna change.
No, none of that's gonna change.
As a matter of fact, tech support, again, it's only based on experience, I can't, can't predict the future, but tech support won't increase. These devices require very little other way of tech support. And as far as, you know, cloud space and bandwidth and all that, we're there now, right? So, we don't need to make any changes whatsoever. And ironically, one of the reasons we think, we kinda live in our, in the cloud-based environment.
Yeah, that's right, cause you're, right now, you're using the Google Cloud.
Well, and that's the thing, you know, yeah, and so, and so, besides the actual like wireless bandwidth and all that, our kids, you know, to me, the game changer in, in public education, education general, was when they introduced Google Apps for Education. So, Google Docs, and, you know, the ability to collaborate in real time. That was, it's like the Jetsons, I mean, that was an amazing, you know, revolutionary teaching and learning device. So, we, we live in that environment anyway.
Yeah.
We're a Google, we're a Google district, so they're, they'll, it should be seamless.
And then, the only, and by the way, I ask these questions just because I have a feeling other people will start to wonder about it. I'm a huge fan of Chromebooks, so I just, I think it's a great move. One thing that I, I wonder if people will start to question though, is that Apple has a reputation for being highly secure. Google, not as mu, you know, not as much. Again, since you're already using the cloud, it's probably, cloud's not, not as much of a question.
We'd be in that same boat today. I think Google actually, I think they do a pretty, I can't articulate their state of security, but they do, they do a pretty good job for education. I mean, the, the evidence bears that up, right? I mean, the, the entire country is moving towards.
Yeah.
Not to be, not to be a shell for Google, but I'd be doing, have to be doing something right.
Right, yeah, I agree.
So, it has the Go, Google Chrome operating system. There's, we won't have any software to install on it, there are all, all apps. So, Google has a pretty robust app store where we can get apps and the kids can use them. You saw the list of apps, the Wii Video and all of that. So we, we would just push those out to the students. It updates automatically. There's minimal tech support required, so we will, we will not have to do as much work on them. It has a long battery life and a, a fast boot time, very similar to what Apple boot times are. It's integrated with Google Apps, so all the apps are there. If the kids want to use Microsoft Office, Microsoft Office is, is online. So if they needed, if they wanted to use it, they could absolutely use it because they will still have a subscription because when we buy a teacher Microsoft Office license, it includes their students. So that won't go away. It's not de, device-specific. It's a sustainable cost for the district. And it also will provide us now, up until this point, we've had students in the summer work with us and be able to work on the laptops. This past summer, we had three students from eighth grade going into ninth grade, working on the, the MacBook Airs, installing batteries and things like that, logic boards, and doing other stuff for us. So, we are hoping to set up a student-staffed help desk with one technician with them because really, it's the screens and a few other things that might go on it that needs to be replaced, something that we can teach the kids to do. So, during the school day, we see an opportunity to get some more students trained in, in a help desk environment.
So that's our recommendation. And it's probably not a surprise to hear it coming from me. I mean, by way of full disclosure, I've been talking about this since before I stepped foot in Duxbury. I've rolled out a one-to-one program with Chromebooks in the past. My former district was the, the first in the state to roll out Chromebooks, and I'll say this. You know, it was wildly successful even then, and those, the machines weren't half of what they are today. You know, they're, they're far more durable, and the device is sort of the same, what it does. It's really a portal to the internet, right? But, and that was, that was six years ago at this point. But what, you saw the, you saw the market trends, there's a reason. If you don't believe in sort of the, the educational benefits, and the fact that it meets, in my opinion, virtually all of our needs in a, in a 21st century school, if you don't subscribe to that, then you need to look at the money. And just say, it's a hard sell to say we'd spend $2 million when you could spend $500. And so, not to, not to oversell that, but I don't know if I could make a different recommendation on either side, but certainly not on the financial side. I feel it would almost be irresponsible.
So, the bring-your-own device is the, is the option that some school districts have adopted. And I think I know why you didn't recommend that, but maybe you wanna elaborate?
So Julie's asking about bring, bring your own device, right? Set it, set some parameters and allow kids to bring in whatever device they want. And, you know, I think that's the future, I really do. I just don't think we're ready for that now. It causes, you know, the, the, some of the sort of benefits of one-to-one, we talked about kinda spontaneity and continuity and equity. It gets, it just gets a little muddied in a bring-your-own-device environment. And I think that's, I think we're all gonna migrate towards that, but not in this generation, I think, of the, of our rollout.
Right.
So, it just is, there's just more issues for, for obvious reasons.
Right.
And it would still be difficult with state testing because at this point, they're just, I know Cohasset in Andover are doing bring-your-own devices. And they're specifying what device that people can bring. This, the question is, is it gonna hold up in state report, in state testing? And we need to watch that and see how that goes.
Okay.
I also would add editorially that it, in Duxbury, it's very expensive to get a free public education.
Right.
Already. And I'm not really sure that I'd promote another transfer responsibility from the town to, to parents.
Yeah. And you're, you're expecting these machines to last six years, is it, four?
They're prob, the, we'll probably talk about three-year replacement.
Three years?
Three or four-year replacement.
If we, right, if we did a lease, it would be three years.
$200 per machine over three years, yeah. So that's $70 a year.
Right. Well, for, yeah. If, well, if we required families to purchase, right, right.
If you were just parsing, parsing how much it was costing on an annual basis.
So, I, I had two questions. Your, your, I praise the flexibility and innovation of our building leaders, but will our faculty's heads come off? Second is, would you envision doing it kind of grade by grade or in one fell swoop? How would you envision a rollout of, of this? So faculty support for the idea, and then how would you actually do it?
So I'll say this, change is hard, you know, for, for some people. But when we, when we look at what's happening in the classroom today, if you walk around and you, like, we're virtually, we're living in the cloud most of the time. So the actual impact in the classroom shouldn't be that great. We are, we are still going to be using Apples for teacher laptops and administrative laptops, so their, their world won't change. There, there's going to be a shift a little bit, but it is, it is not dramatic by any stretch. Even, even with the, the very expensive Macs. I'm making this number up, so I don't, it's not that precise, but probably 95% of the time, they're using it to go to the web anyway.
Right.
And so, I don't, that's why, I just don't see it being a, a dramatic shift. But, that being said, we're sensitive to that. We've had several conversations about, you know, professional development and responsible rollout and... We've had several conversations about, you know, professional development and responsible rollout and, you know, again, just general, generally being sensitive to the teachers' needs.
For kids, it will be trivial. Like, there will be no issue for kids. It'll have it figured out.
Oh, the kid, from a technical standpoint, kids are gonna have no problem with it, teachers have no problem with it. It'll be, you know, there'll be some grumbling, I think, because we're giving, giving students now a very shiny, shiny, nice machine, and they'll, they'll feel like they're getting something less. That's gonna be a short-lived, um, response, 'cause the work they're gonna be doing is going to be virtually the same. Uh, as far as the, um, rollout, we're looking at doing it all, all in one fell swoop. Mainly because our, the useful, as I mentioned, the useful life of our current machines, it, it's, it's gonna screech to a halt. We're really struggling to keep up with, um, the aging inventory we have. So, by replacing them all at once, it'll allow us to have consistency and continuity throughout the district, but it'll also allow us to take the best of our aging inventory and redeploy those, kind of in that supplementary way that, that Cheryl was describing.
And there's nothing that, uh, that the, any of the classes are using from the publishers, like ancillary materials for the textbooks and stuff, that would've been installed on the Macs, right? So, again, that's.
Again, cloud, again, that's been a shift too, yeah.
Not like a system requirement problem for any, okay.
Right. And is that the same for all the security? Land school and security measures?
Yes, you'll still be able to use all of that.
Okay.
Yep.
It's all the same?
Mm-hmm. It's all cloud-based.
I, I just wanna say this, um, not to stop questions, but I, I should've added sort of a what, what's next for us. Obviously, we need to, you know, make a decision, have a blessing or not, um, of the school committee, but I think it's important for the public to know that we have had a very preliminary conversation, and three of you were part of that conversation with the town. I'm losing track of the time, back in either late August, early September, where we talked about uh, this looming decision, and I, I really applaud, um, John Adams, the finance director, and Rainey Reed, the town administrator. We're kind of very excited, actually, about the possibility of going the shift, and their, their wheels started turning about how we can, how we can make this happen. So, one of the next steps is for us to go back, um, I told them both that we're gonna have this presentation tonight, but go back soon and to say, okay, you know, can, can we make this happen and, and how are we gonna make it happen? Cheryl and I have talked a lot about, um, you know, options if, if, if it's not funded, you know, externally, that, they're not good ones, though, I, I would say, uh, but we have to do something. I cannot envision a scenario where we, where we go backwards. It, it would be, um, that'd be irresponsible as well. So, we need to find a way to make it happen, is what I'm saying.
Right.
I feel good about it. What do you think?
Two thumbs up.
Yeah, I mean, it makes the most financial sense. It's fiscally responsible and it's educationally acceptable, because there's really no change. It's just a shift and.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, we did the right thing in two thousand and twelve. If you look at what was.
What we got, yeah.
And this is the right thing to do now, because the, it's completely changed in five years. I mean, Apple was at fifty percent when the decision was made to go with Apple. That was the, the mainstream selection at the time. It would be an outlier if we did it now.
Right.
So, I, I mean, that's, that, that makes it very easy. There was, I thought that was a great presentation, and really thank you for taking the time to be thoughtful about it.
Great, great. Cheryl, Cheryl deserves virtually all the credit. She's really done a phenomenal job in both preparation and implementation and vision, you know, around this, so, thanks, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
So, can I, can I safely assume that we should move forward, at least with the conversation?
Yeah.
With the, about financing?
And would this be, go into your budget, or is that?
So, it's, it, this, this is, it's a fa- it's a factor in the budget. We'll point that out when we present the budget, and we, we made some, um, we'll have to make some modifications to what I'm gonna present to you next week, budget, if in fact it doesn't get funded.
So, you'll give us two scenarios?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Do you wanna use one?
You know, I was just, I was just, I thought I had access to it a couple of minutes ago, but now it, it seemed to disappear. No, 'cause I have a, um, so I just, I.
It's not, it's, it's a, it's a PowerPoint, so let me just try this, sorry.
Oh, is it in the, oh, yeah, it's in the folder? Just give me one second, let me just. Oh, here it is.
You're gonna project again?
I am gonna project.
Just when you.
Okay. Capital.
So, um, I, uh, this is like being the, the person between, uh, lunch or something, but I'm, I'm the last person standing between us and the Red Sox, so. Gonna try to, try to hustle. So, um, internally, we've been working, uh, quite a bit on our, on our capital budget request, and I'm just gonna try to, I'm gonna go through our, our school request and, um, try to get through this. So, I, I don't know exactly what amount of capital will be available for the school department this year, uh, but the list that we've put together, at least for presentation purposes, has, um, almost three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars in capital requests. They are prioritized, so this list has, you'll see the lo- location or department, where they're coming from, just a brief description of their project. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go through these one by one, and then how we have internally, Dave, myself, Danielle, um, how we've prioritized them. This, it's, it's a bit of a Sophie's Choice situation, so we, we tried our best to create a priority order. I can't say I'm, I'm married to it, 'cause I could make the argument for a con- a complete flip as well, but this is our best prioritization, and then the cost. Um, I wanna point out that the three that I starred here, sorry about that, I'm not gonna talk about tonight, because they were on Brian, they were in Brian Sherry's presentation last, um, couple of weeks ago, the first being the tree removal on the steel, on the steel campus, which is a really significant safety, um, issue at this time. And also, uh, his Kubota utility vehicle and a, uh, custodial, uh, orbital floor scrubber. So, I'm not gonna go over those tonight, because Brian articulated the needs for those, I think, quite well, uh, at the October tenth meeting. Does that sound good? So, starting, um, at the top, um, it's probably no surprise that, uh, something in the realm of security, um, hits high on our priority list. And this is, um, adding card access for exterior doors at the Chandler School. As I say here, Chandler is the last school that does not have exterior card access, exterior door card access, and it's a little tricky for, again, for somewhat, um, obvious reasons. But right now, it's, there's, there's a management issue too here, is that since all doors are locked from seven AM to six PM, staff need to man the door for a couple hours during, you know, during the morning hours, and it's, it's just time and staff-intensive. Um, so that's, it's a security issue, but it's also, it's also a staff issue. Um, but adding the card system to Chandler would allow us just to, just have a much more secure building and just give staff an easier way to, uh, enter and exit. The cost is thirty thousand, three oh five. So, we, um, the third of our four buildings was just done this summer. They're all in school, so Alden now has, um, exterior card acc- exterior door card access. So, this is the final, final push for that. Moving on, technology. This is a, a request that might look, um, seem familiar to you, 'cause it's a two-year capital request. This is a replacement of our, um, backup and disaster recovery equipment. As it says here, this equipment backs up all of our infrastructure, our servers, our systems, all of our data. Super important, um, super important, um, and something we just have to do. Our equipment right now is probably beyond or right at the edge of its useful life. It's about nine years old. So, last year, the town, um, gave us forty-seven thousand dollars for year one of a two-year plan. Since then, the estimates have changed a little bit, so our year-two request is, is higher. It's fifty-eight thousand, seven forty-five. Uh, but this is something that really needs to be done, and it, it hits high on our priority list, mainly because we put it as a two-year, two-year plan, and it's of critical importance. Another security issue, again, high on the priority, priority list, there's a really, uh, pretty sophisticated, uh, product. It's a security film that gets applied to glass that really minimizes, um, how glass, how the glass is shattered, right? So, I just wanna say, it's, you put the coating on the glass, it does not make the glass bulletproof. It is not a replacement for bulletproof glass, um, but it's a, it's a, it's a very affordable alternative. So, the idea being that it will slow, I, this is tough stuff to talk about, but it would slow down an intruder who's trying to enter the building either with some, you know, some device, or, God forbid, a, a fire, firearm. So, it's a, it's a security measure. I don't wanna say in public at what locations this will be installed for security purposes, um, but they'll be at select and very strategic locations throughout the district. But I, this is a recommendation and something we've done in collaboration with the Duxbury Police Department. It's a product that we've talked about together. Again, we think it's a good alternative and a good next step, um, in our, uh, towards our kind of improved safety and security protocols. But it's a thirty, it's a thirty-thousand-dollar, um, item, so. I'm not sure I articulated that as well as I could've, but if you, you understand what it is, it's just simply a coating. This is another, um, year-two of a two-year phase-in. Um, last year, we, uh, talked about replacing these old lockers here in Chandler School with, with cubbies, like we have it. Um, these are, this is actually a picture of Alden School. It's a, it's a really ex- expensive, um, project. Um, I'm hoping it won't cost a hundred thousand dollars when we finally go to bid, but it is going to be a sig- our, our original estimates are in that, are in that range. And so, this is a, this is a, um, both a cleanliness and efficiency and, um, somewhat a, somewhat a safety issue in the sense that it, the, um, having backpacks and jackets and books and all that, blocking access and egress in the hallways is, uh, again, it's messy, so for the neat nicks, it's not a good look, but it's also, just as far as, uh, having our kids, uh, and adults flow through the building in a safe and orderly way, uh, this project's gonna go a long way towards helping that. So, that's the second, uh, second of a two-year plan. We talked about this last year. It did not get funded, but I still think it's a critical need. Uh, we're looking to buy a twelve-passenger van, um, to be used for a whole host of things. Uh, the van would be used for, um, small group field trips, athletic events, extracurricular activities. Um, it'll be used for special education. Uh, we have kids who, actually put an example up here, kids right now who are going to, um, post-high school programs at Bridgewater State. We're doing more and more, um, vocational training in the community for some students in some of our specialized programs. Kids are doing work studies. Um, our staff is actually, um, conducts a lot of home visits for, you know, for various reasons. The usage of our one van has really increased almost exponentially in the last few years, and we expect our needs to grow even more, um, in the near term. And it's, you know, for us to use a private, um, bus or van contractor, um, it, it's just, it's becoming cost-prohibitive. So, for us to be able to, um, have a, have a van that will last us for probably ten years is a really cost-effective way. Unfortunately, the public sector, it's hard to, uh, actually calculate, you know, payback, but our payback would be, I don't know, probably, probably two or three years at most. Uh, we're just not able to account for, you know, account for that. But I, I think this is a really important and, um, need in the district. And I, I just wanna clarify, 'cause last year it got asked a few times, I was asked, why, um, why, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we buy a handicap-accessible van? We will never buy a handicap-accessible van. If we need handicap-accessible transportation, we would hire a, a private professional contractor to do that. So, I just wanna state that unequivocally. We will, we will never transport, um, students who require, uh, wheelchair transportation. It's just not, it's not a core competency, and it's not something that I think would be a, uh, good thing in terms of liability. So, this van is a passenger van that can be used for multiple purposes. Does that make sense?
Yes. Do you, can you go back to more than two times the cost to use a private bus or van? Do you have figures on that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, I can give you the cost per, you know, so for example, um, I don't know if that's the right way to frame that as I, as I read that. So, you know, uh, an athletic event or a field trip, it could cost, what, four hundred dollars, uh, for one trip?
Right.
Right? I don't know why I put that as two times the cost, so, probably, I probably did some math about the, the usage at one point, but just think about that. Even for a small athletic team, um, golf, um, or tennis, you know, depending on the numbers, it could cost us four hundred dollars to send them to six or seven away meets.
Per meet?
Yeah, per, you know.
Yeah.
Per meet. So, you could, you, you could spend thousands, so you could save thousands of dollars a year, just, just in athletics. Never mind when you consider the other extracurricular activities or the specialized transportation. So, you know, it's a cost, I mean, it's thirty thousand dollars to buy a van, but it's, it's a very cost-effective way of providing transportation, and, and efficiently of providing transportation, you know, with our own staff. Moving on, this is a project, um, that I can't speak to with any great knowledge, but.
Cheryl's still there?
No, but I'll, I'll speak to Cheryl, but, um, and, um, we have a need to rewire, uh, this building in Chandler, uh, all of our classrooms from VGA, and VGA, you guys might know, but it's, uh, it's the ones with the pins, right, on this picture, um, to HDMI. Right now, we're doing okay, 'cause we have an older, kind of older-generation laptops, but we need to replace our teacher laptops next year. Kind of, it's FY twenty-one, so it's still a year away, but when we do that, we're gonna need to convert all of our VGA to HDMI. HDMI is better quality anyway, but we're gonna have, have an actual need. Our, our, the new laptops, um, won't be, um, is that the right word?
Compatible.
Compatible, uh, with the, with the, uh, VGA. So, we're getting ahead of ourselves just a little bit, but we wanna get ahead of ourselves to make sure we're prepared when it's time to roll out the new batch of laptops. So, this is a pretty important project. Uh, on a happier note, or what have you, um, Jim Donovan, um, has been talking quite a bit about the need to begin a phase-in plan to replace several school-owned instruments, um, at the high school and middle school. Some of these instruments that we're talking about are, are decades old, upwards of thirty years old in some cases. There are several types of instruments. Is Jim still here? Jimmy, what is this, a euphonium or something? Is that a eup- euphonium? I don't know what that does exactly, but that is a euphonium. But there are, but there's several instruments that we do provide, the kind of specialized instruments that we, that we provide as a school district for students to play in the various, uh, ensembles throughout the school day. Uh, they're aging, and at some point, we have to consider a replacement plan. So, I credit to, credit to Jim and the music department for being, for being forward-thinking. So, the idea is that we begin a five-year, five-year plan. We have to, we have to start thinking about that for, in a lot of different areas, and this is just one of them. So, it made our, it made our list for, I think, good, for good reasons. Jim offered to play for us tonight, but he, uh. Yeah. This is another technology replacement. Um, at, um, Alden School in particular, we have several, uh, many classrooms that have uh, fairly old and rather outdated, uh, technology. Actually, this is a, this is a smart board. The smart board's a brand, you know, sort of interactive whiteboard. Those, a lot of them were moved from the old building to Alden, you know, pre, pre-construction. Those systems, as it says here, are, you know, seven, eight years old, and, uh, they need to be replaced, as do the projectors and the wiring systems that go with it. Um, the new, the new systems are really, uh, they're much different. This is called the Mimio Teach. This is actually just a, a unit that sits on a standard whiteboard that, working with the projector, turns that standard whiteboard into an interactive whiteboard. Uh, they're far more affordable, um, they're far more cost-effective, and now a preferred, um, option for schools, you know, all over the country. So, we're looking to replace the old smart board technology with what we call Mimio. It's a brand as well, but they're called Mimio Teachers. But this is, uh, these are several systems, uh, but when you start replacing the projectors and the Mimio Teach and the sound. and the Mimio Teach and the sound, you're at roughly, you know, $3,400 or $3,500 a unit, so it does add up. In Alden, Karen Whitaker, last year, put forth, again, very forward-thinking, a four-year furniture replacement plan, total cost in the neighborhood of $40,000. We did get $10,000 last year, that we did a lot of replacement of classroom furniture. Phase, phase two, so the second year of the, the plan is about teacher desks, and so like this, this is actually the desk that actually they were proposing, so $10,000 would allow us to replace about 20 teacher desks. So again, a continuation of a two-year plan. Middle school, this is really about class size and our, our need to accommodate larger class sizes, particularly in science labs, where the, the best work environment is to put students in, on, sitting in stools and science lab tables. Right now, we don't have enough science furniture to accommodate those large class sizes, and those classes will be here for several years. So this is just a roughly $7,000 replacement, which will allow us to buy six lab tables and 30 stools. And this is sort of for the, the future, but I just want to keep it on the radar. We just talked about the one-to-one computer program, obviously. We talked, actually, when Brian Sherry was here, about the need to replace the turf field on the steel campus. And Tom Holgate has been talking about, or starting to advocate for the need to replace and resurface our tennis courts over on the steel campus. We're not in a position right now to talk about that, but we do have some backup material that we'll share with you at some point, but it's a significant cost, it's several hundred thousand dollars. So again, even though we're not at the stage now, we want to request it, we need to keep it on the radar to make sure that we're, we're ready when the time comes. So that's a kind of a quick run-through of our, of our capital requests. I don't know if you have any questions, but I really appreciate the thoughtfulness and the research that our administrators did to, to come up with these requests. I think they, I think they're solid.
Great.
Good?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
That's it.
Okay.
Great.
So we just need to vote to approve the Waterfront Realty Entrepreneurial Scholarship. For Matt, you were, it was about 2:00 a.m. last time we talked about you. And Peter, you weren't here. But did you read the scholarship? Okay, so we just had a couple questions, and...
Yeah, and we got a...
We got a memo from Lisa.
Yeah, I mean, the summary of Lisa's response was like, it's not that, it's not that different than, than others, so, so I hope that, I hope that sufficed.
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve this very generous scholarship from Jonathan Market Waterfront Realty?
I move that we approve Waterfront Realty Entrepreneurial Scholarship.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, this is great. Any other new business or anything? I know the MASK conference is coming up. I don't know if anybody's going, other than me. Are you going to go? I love Jim Brody, so I can't wait to see him.
Yes, damn it.
Yeah, it's love or hate with him. And then, I would just say, read through the, I'm blanking. The, we usually send a delegate to the, the proposals that the school, the MASK Association and school committee stand for. There's a whole list of, Mary Lou always used to go and be the rep for us, and she would just sort of talk about the resolutions. That's the word I couldn't come up with, because it's past 8 o'clock at night. But there is a whole host of resolutions, and if, you know, if anybody wants to read through them or have questions, it's, it's some pretty basic stuff, but some of it, you know, you might say, I agree or I don't agree, and if we felt strongly about something, then we could try to find a route. But if not, they'll just be passed without Duxbury's input, which is how that goes. Okay. Nothing else, teacher? Okay, public comment? And adjournment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Go soft.
Yeah.
It's nothing, nothing.
All right, thank you.
That's good.
Somebody knows what's going on. Right? I see him even. I got a poem written out. I took some New York tonight, they're going to put me up to bed. I'm not watching a thing.
Next meeting, it's going to be more defined, rather than being a soft, men's softball set.
On the first?
I'm going to be...
Jeez, Julie, you're going to be like Twitter. Yeah, that's okay.
If you jump up in the middle of the...